Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will call to order please. First, Madam Deputy Clerk, I will ask if we have a quorum.
Counselors, could I remind you to sign in, please? Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay, thank you very much, and good evening and welcome everybody to tonight's special council meeting to talk about the referendum question on ranked ballots. So just by way of background, November of 2016, City Council voted that we would put a question on the ballot of the 2018 election asking voters if they would like to switch to a ranked ballot voting system. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss the question that will appear on the ballot. So just to be clear, both to members of the public and to counselors, that this is not a debate tonight on whether or not to hold a referendum, and is also not a debate on the merits of whether a ranked ballot is a good system or not, it's simply to discuss the question itself. So what we will do tonight is we will begin with a briefing. After that briefing has been completed by staff, then I will open it up to members of the public that are here for anybody that would like to come and provide input on the question that will appear on the ballot, you're welcome to do that. And I'll explain, but I'll just look for if you're interested in speaking, you just raise your hand and I'll invite you up to the front. And then after we've heard from members of the public, then at that point, then we will put the recommendation on the floor, and then council can ask questions and debate from there. Okay, so with that, we will begin with our briefing. So first, John Bolignoni, City Clerk, Janet James, Deputy City Clerk, and George Wallace, Project Manager will provide a briefing on Item 1, a report number 17 from the CAO with respect to the 2018 municipal election referendum question on the ballot for ranked ballot voting. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. As Mr. Mayor indicated, my name is John Bolignoni. I'm the City Clerk for the City of Kingston. With me tonight to assist in the presentation are Janet James, our Deputy City Clerk, George Wallace, our Senior Special Project Manager. And just before we begin our presentation, we'd like to show a brief video which provides an overview of the ranked ballot voting.
In the 2018 municipal election, you will be asked to vote on a referendum question. Are you in favor of using ranked ballot voting to elect the mayor and district councillors in the City of Kingston during the 2012 municipal election? But what is ranked ballot voting and how does it work? With ranked ballot voting, you don't just vote for one candidate, you vote for your first, second, and third choices. After all of the votes are counted, if one of the candidates gets 50% of the first choice votes plus one, that candidate wins. But if no candidate gets 50% of the votes plus one, the candidate with the least number of first choice votes is eliminated. Then the ballots for the eliminated candidate are redistributed to the remaining candidates based on the next choice marked on each of the eliminated candidates' ballots. This process is repeated, and each candidate does not vote additionally. We're in more of a ranked ballot voting facility concerned than the dot CA slot ranked voting.
We're just having a slight technological glitch, so I'll start presenting, and Ms. James will catch up with respect to the PowerPoint videos. So the 2018 ballot will include a referendum question asking the Kingston electors if they're in favor of using ranked ballot voting to elect the mayor and district councillors. This public meeting is a requirement under the Municipal Elections Act. The purpose of this public meeting is to present and consider the wording of the proposed referendum question. As such, this public meeting is not a forum for discussing the merits of ranked ballot voting. As we will discuss further, there will be additional opportunities to discuss the merits of ranked ballot voting and how it works prior to the council passing the required ranked Recognizing that ranked ballot voting represents a significant change from the current system for candidates, election administrators, and the electorate, the approved public engagement strategy included open houses, as well as the use of election, website signage, social media, news releases, and the videos that you just saw to provide information on the ranked ballot voting and how it differs from the current electoral system. Four open houses were held on January 10th and 11th and attended by approximately 65 people. A summary of the key questions and comments raised at the open house is included in the council report. The majority of those comments and questions were not specific to the question on the ballot and related more to the details of how ranked ballot works. The public engagement strategy will be ongoing until voting day in October, and another series of open houses will be held in September closer to the election. As stated, the main purpose of this public meeting is to consider the referendum question. However, in order for electors to be in a position to make an informed decision on the question, they must have a basic understanding of ranked ballot voting and how it works. For those who may not have attended one of the open houses or reviewed the information on the website, the following few slides soon will provide some basic information about the current electoral system and the ranked ballot voting. There is one round of ballot counting unless a recount is required, and the candidate with the most votes is elected. In the 2014 election, the winning candidates received a low of 33.7% and a high of 87.3%.
So with respect to ranked ballot voting, it is optional for municipalities. For the 2018 election, out of all the municipalities in Ontario, only the City of London has opted to use ranked ballot voting for the 2018 municipal election. Ranked ballot voting can only be used to elect the mayor and the district councillors. It cannot be used to elect the school board trustees, and the reason for that is that school board districts generally cover more than one municipality. So each of those municipalities within the school board district would have to be using ranked ballot voting. So at this point in time, ranked ballot voting is not available to use for the school board trustees. In a ranked ballot election, as you saw in the video, the winning candidate must get 50% of the vote plus one, or a simple majority. And unlike the first past the post system, where there is one round of ballot counting, there may be multiple rounds of ballot counting required before a winner is declared in a ranked ballot election. So in the ranked ballot election, electors get to rank their choices for mayor and district councillor, first choice, second choice, third choice. At the open houses, we had a number of questions about the number of choices that would be available, and that is something that would be decided by council prior to passing the ranked ballot election bylaw if council decides to go with ranked ballot voting. At the close of voting, all of the first choice votes are counted, and as you saw in the video, if one of the candidates has 50% plus one, that candidate is the winner of the election. If no candidate receives 50% plus one on the first ballot, then the candidate with the fewest number of votes is eliminated, and their ballots get redistributed to the remaining candidates based on the next choice on the ballot. If no remaining candidate then gets enough votes to win, the process keeps getting repeated with the lowest number of votes, the candidate with the lowest number of votes being eliminated, those votes being redistributed to the remaining candidates until we get to the point where one of the candidates does have 50% plus one. So the following slides will illustrate in a high level how the ranked ballot voting scenario would work if there are 1,000 voters and they need 501 votes to win. So based on the first choice votes here, none of the candidates received the 501 votes. So candidate one with only 75 votes, they would be eliminated from the race, and their 75 votes would be redistributed to the four remaining candidates based on the next choice on the ballot on those 75 ballots. So when those 75 ballots get redistributed, there is still no candidate that has reached the 501 vote threshold. So in this case, candidate number five with the fewest second count votes, they would be eliminated, and their 140 votes would then be redistributed to the remaining three candidates based on the highest choice on those ballots. And then finally, on the third count, one of the candidates makes it over 501, so that candidate then is the winner of the election. This is an infographic that is available on the city's election website, and again, it shows at a high level how ranked ballot voting would work. So this was a slide that we had at the open houses that shows what the results would have been in the 2014 election if it had been a ranked ballot election, and making the assumption that all of the votes that were cast in that election would have been those electors' first choice. And if that had been the case, then eight of the districts in that 2014 election would have been decided on the first vote. Eight of the candidates received more than 50% plus one, so there would have been no need for multiple ballot counts in those eight districts. For mayor and the other four districts, multiple ballot counts would have been required because the winning candidates in those districts had a low of 33.7% of the vote to a high of 40.6%. So in those cases, no candidate reached the threshold on the first ballot count, which would have meant multiple ballot counts. So at the open houses, we were asked the question, in the 2014 election, which were the four districts that would have required a multiple ballot count? And then we were also asked, well, that's an interesting slide, but could you give us a bit more of a historical perspective on the past elections? So the 2017 by-election, there were seven candidates, and based on the vote counts for those seven candidates, it's likely that there would have had to have been at least five ballot counts to declare a winner. In the 2014 election, multiple ballot counts would have been required for the mayor and four districts. In the 2010 election, multiple ballot counts would have been required for three of the districts, 2006 for the mayor and three districts, and in 2003 for three districts. So over the past four elections, it's been fairly consistent in terms of the number of districts that would have required multiple ballot counts. We were also asked, actually just today, a question was raised about the number of candidates in the past elections, and the point that was being made was if a number of the districts only have two candidates, then what's the value of doing ranked ballot voting? So we put together this slide that shows that over the past four elections, that in actual fact, the majority of the districts have had three or more candidates, and in fact, in each of the past four elections, at least seven of the districts have had four or more candidates. One of the other questions that we were asked about quite a bit at the four open houses is what would be the cost of a ranked ballot election? So in order to implement ranked ballot voting, there will be additional costs, and those costs will be related to staffing, technological, and financial resources. Further to the open houses, we received requests for more information about what was London's experience, being the only municipality using ranked ballot voting, and whether or not we could revise the costing numbers. So in looking at the items that would lead to the additional costs, and this was basically the same information that was provided in the earlier reports to council, first and foremost, one would be public engagement and public education, and that would be necessary to explain how ranked ballot voting works, how it differs from first past the post, what it would cost, how the ballots are counted, and so on. Second would be ballot design. So with a ranked ballot election, as we mentioned, only the mayor and district councillors would be elected using ranked ballot voting. So the ballot would have to be designed to be able to accommodate ranked ballot voting for the mayor and district councillors, and then first past the post for the school board trustees. So based on London's experience, that would likely require a larger ballot and perhaps even a two-sided ballot, so that is additional cost. Voting technology, that would also have to be upgraded to provide the new software necessary to be able to do the reporting requirements necessary under the new legislation, and to be able to count the ballots on the first count, and then do all the redistribution of the ballots on subsequent counts. So again, that's an additional cost, and based on our vendor and their advice, it would be at least 20% more. Once the ballots have been designed and the voting equipment has been selected, then there would have to be a process of logic testing to make sure that the first ballot count is accurate and that the second ballot and subsequent ballot counts are accurate as well. So all of that is an additional cost that has to be paid to the equipment vendor to make sure that the equipment works properly. IT support, so the city's infrastructure for technology would also have to be upgraded to accommodate the new reporting requirements and to be in line with the new voting equipment. Staff training, we would have to make sure that all of the election staff know how ranked ballot voting works, and there would be approximately 225 election staff that would need to be trained, so that's an additional cost. And in terms of election support staff, based on London's experience, they were hiring one additional senior election official plus one additional worker at each polling location to be able to deal with ranked ballot voting. So what were London's costs? Based on a report in January of 2017, London estimated an additional $322,500 to do the ranked ballot election, and that consisted of the items that are shown here, consultation, ballots, the vendor cost, election staff resources, and additional poll workers. The London report noted that those costs were based on the same number of candidates that they had in 2014 and on ranking three candidates only. If either of those items changed, there would be additional cost. The costs also excluded the algorithm for the reporting requirements and for counting the ballots, which at the time that they wrote that report, still had not been developed and tested, so that would also be an additional cost. So when we looked at the City of Kingston costs and what had been reported previously to council, which was $250,000 to $300,000, based on London's experience and the estimate that we received from our vendor, for contracted services, which would include things like the vote tabulators, the ballots, internet voting, and accessible voting equipment, it would be an additional $45,000. Election staffing, $60,000. Staff training, $25,000. Public education and consultation, $75,000. And election administration, $15,000. And those costs exclude IT costs and the algorithm development. So in total, that's another $220,000. The budget for the 2018 municipal election is $750,000. So with the revised estimate for ranked ballot voting, and also taking into account the unknown costs for IT upgrades and the algorithm development, a ranked ballot election in 2022 could cost as much as $1 million. As required by the Municipal Elections Act, detailed costs of the election would be provided to council and to the public prior to the ranked ballot voting bylaw being passed by council for the 2022 election. So now I'll turn it over to Janet, who will take you through the referendum question process.
As George mentioned, I'm going to share with you some of the information regarding the referendum question itself, the process, and the next steps. The process for submitting a referendum question to the electors is set out by the Municipal Elections Act. Council must pass a bylaw prior to March 1st of 2018 authorizing the city clerk to place the question on the ballot. The draft of this bylaw is attached to the report in your special council agenda tonight. Prior to passing this bylaw, the city must provide at least 10 days' notice of the intent to pass the bylaw and must hold at least one public meeting. This is the public meeting, and the notice was published in the Wig standard on January 23rd, and notice has also been posted on the City of Kingston website. Provided that the bylaw is passed, a notice of passing must then be issued within 15 There is an appeal process for the bylaw, and that could only be appealed to the chief electoral officer, and it must be done within 20 days of the issuing of the notice of passing. The only grounds to the appeal of the bylaw are that the question is not considered to be clear, concise, and neutral, or not capable of being answered in the affirmative or negative with a simple yes or no. The proposed referendum question is, are you in favor of using ranked ballot voting to elect the mayor and district councillors in the City of Kingston, yes or no? The final wording of this referendum question will be approved by city council for inclusion in the bylaw. In order for the referendum question to be binding on the municipality, at least 50% of the eligible electors must vote on the referendum question. The number of eligible electors will be determined based on the voters list at the close of voting on voting day on October 22nd of 2018. So what happens to implement the question? If the majority of the votes are no, the city could take no further action on ranked ballot voting for a period of four years after voting day. That's assuming that 50% of the electorate came out and voted, and that 50% of those people who voted, voted no. Any reconsideration of ranked ballot voting could not happen until after October 22nd, 2022. The earliest that the city could use ranked ballot voting would be the 2026 municipal election. This is the only result that is truly binding on the municipality. If the majority of the votes were yes, again, that would require 50% of the electorate to turn out and vote, and it would require 50% of those who voted to answer the question yes. So if the majority of the votes are yes, the Municipal Elections Act requires the city to implement the results in a timely fashion. The implementation must respect and is subject to all of the legislation requirements and the processes. Implementation must be initiated in 180 days from voting day, and council must pass a ranked ballot election bylaw, so there would be another bylaw that would require your approval. Prior to passing this ranked ballot election bylaw, council must consider the costs of including the election, sorry, the costs of conducting the election, the availability of the technology and software, and the impact on election administration. Prior to passing the bylaw, council must make the following information available to the public: a description of how the election would be conducted, an estimate of the cost of the election, a description of the voting equipment and vote counting equipment being considered, and a description of any alternative voting method being considered, such as using vote tabulators. Prior to passing the bylaw, council must hold at least one public open house and at least one public meeting. After the public meeting, council has the discretion not to implement the results of the question. The bylaw must be passed by May 1st of 2021 for the 2022 election. If the bylaw is passed to implement the question results, council cannot reverse or substantially change the action for four years. So what happens if 50% of the electors do not vote on the question? Council could still decide to implement ranked ballot voting. The referendum results could be viewed as advisory in subsequent council reconsiderations of ranked ballot voting. I'm going to turn it back over to John just to go over some of the key dates that are coming up.
Thank you, Janet. So some key dates for the referendum question. Obviously, tonight is a key date, this is the statutory public meeting, and we're hopeful and confident that we'll pass the bylaw this evening. February the 9th, we propose to provide notice of passing to the community as well as to the minister. March 1st, that is the date by which council must pass the bylaw, as I indicated previously, it's our hope that we're passing it tonight. In September, we hope to provide some additional open houses to either provide a refresher or to further explain ranked ballot voting as well as the referendum question. And then we'll start on October 13th with the advanced voting day and the internet voting, and on October 22nd is voting day, and we hope to have results shortly thereafter. So that completes our briefing, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So before we move into our deliberations, I will open the floor to members of the public that are here tonight, if they would like to speak and to make comments, again, with respect to the question that is proposed. So if you'd like to speak, just ask you to raise your hand and ask you to come up. Yes, sir, you can come up? You can actually, what I'll do is I'll just have you come and speak at the podium, if that's okay, and I'll just ask that anyone that wishes to speak, if you just give your name and address just for the minutes, and please provide us with your comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name's Eric Carstens, I live at 165 Ontario Street, and I'm looking for clarification, I guess, and I did ask this question at the public meeting, and I see that it's still not being addressed here, so I want to make sure that as we move forward on this issue and council's making a decision whether to go with ranked ballot or not, I wonder if at somewhere along the process, if we could have a summary of the pros and the cons of that particular style of voting. I've heard a description of what ranked voting actually is, but I haven't heard a discussion of why we would want to do that versus first past the post. And it seems to me that from what we're hearing over and over again, that there's a approximately 25% increase in the cost, and so if people are simply saying, well, I don't know anything about ranked voting, but why would I vote for that because it's going to cost me 25% more? It seems to me it would be incumbent on the city and staff to provide kind of a more detailed analysis of why we would want to have first past the post versus ranked ballot, or why would we want a ranked ballot versus first past the post. To me, that's really the question that really needs to be investigated, and I think the public would really like to hear that from people who have some experience and expertise in voting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I'm Frank Dixon, 495 Alfred, Department 2. Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, and fellow citizens and media, I think we're doing well in our education process. I went to one of the four public meetings that were held last month, and I learned a lot, asked some questions, got some answered and some not answered, and I've learned also from the presentation tonight, and thanks to the previous speaker. One thing I'm disappointed in so far is the fact that we haven't had a lot of information on other jurisdictions and how it's worked there, and that was hitting the same point that was just made. So it's a major departure, and I think we need to learn more about this before we decide, and I would have hoped to see more detail in the staff report on it. My own view on it is that it has potential for good in that some people feel that their votes are wasted if they don't wind up voting for the candidate who wins. So if they have a chance to rank the candidates, then their vote might be counting more, and that might increase turnout. I think it might also lead to more candidates running, and that's always good because you're getting more different voices to be heard, better debate, and the issues are going to be discussed. So that's just my feeling on it right now, I'm just kind of learning about the process. But I am disappointed that we haven't had a chance to learn more about it in terms of, say, what's done in Europe and getting a feedback or other areas in the world, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, thanks so much for the opportunity to speak. I'll be brief. I'm from Toronto, my name's Dave Maslin. I work very closely with the ministry on the legislation that opened up the door for any of Ontario's 444 municipalities to explore the option of any of Ontario's 444 municipalities to explore the option of using ranked ballots in 2018. And out of those 444, it was disappointing to see that only one city took the plunge to try it, and that only two took the most democratic approach, which is to have a referendum and send the question to the people. So I just want to thank you for your courage and your boldness, and being those two outliers who said, "Why don't we let the people decide how we're elected instead of withholding that option from them?" So thank you for that. For those who want to see how the system works, you can watch the Conservative Leadership Race, which is coming up. It'll be a great demonstration. Every party in Canada uses this system. It works quite smoothly, and the algorithm is being used all the time. Lastly, for those who have said you want to learn more about the pros and cons, and from cities who are using it, there's going to be an event at the Agnes Etherington Art Gallery on February 27th with speakers from the US who have worked in cities and seen these elections play out, including Jean Massey, who's the Executive Director of Fair Vote Minnesota. They've been using ranked ballots in Minneapolis for over a decade. She'll be here on the 27th at the art gallery. I hope you can join us. Thank you. And I think the question's great. I support the staff report. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
I'm Ted Chu, and my address is 28 Hill Street. I believe, Your Worship, that the thing that you're most interested in tonight is some comments about the wording of the referendum. And my only comment about the wording is to say that it is simple and it is straightforward. And I would ask you not to change the wording at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I would have a comment about this city presentation. So it seems that there's lots of details on what, how the process would be costly, and what are the details of this cost, and little detail on, well, just statistics on how the results would change. The decision would be, the process would be relevant in few writings, and it would change the decision possibly in even less writings. But among these, remember, there was a 2006 mayoral election. If you recall, the big issue was the big arena, what became the K-Rock Center. There was one candidate that supported going ahead with it and won the election with a plurality of the vote. And there were two candidates opposing it that together won a majority of the vote. So in the cases where decisions could be reversed, it seems to be significant. And there was a 2014 election also. There were two candidates, one older, experienced councillor, and one much younger woman visibly competing for the same pool of electors. And there were lots of talk about strategic voting there. So we have to think about how many young voters would have been put off by the whole process of participating in democracy also. So it's not just statistics, it's context as well.
Sir, can we just get your name for the minutes?
Claude Tardif.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Going once? Going twice? Okay. So at this point, then I will ask for report number 17 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor George, that report number 17 from the chief administrative officer recommend be received and adopted.
Okay. So our one item in our special counsel meeting is now on the floor. 2018 municipal election referendum question on the ballot, ranked ballot voting. Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. The second last speaker from the public, in his short summary of the issue, hit the nail on the head about what we're actually debating tonight. It's the wording of the question itself. And so if you look at that, it's one sentence. "Are you in favor of using the ranked ballot voting to elect the mayor and district councillors in the City of Kingston? Yes, no?" Context for this, for the question of whether this is the correct wording, the context for that, I think I'll just mention a referendum question that did create controversy at the time. It was the Quebec referendum question on the second Quebec referendum on sovereignty or whatever it was called. I can't even remember the exact wording, but I remember that it was controversial. I wasn't really involved in politics at the time, but that was one thing that I did notice as a member of the public, is that it didn't seem like everybody was on the same page as far as what was being asked. Like, the question was somewhat misleading, or at least could be misinterpreted. I think I agreed with that basic point. Now here, what we have is a clear sentence, short and to the point, so I don't think you can claim that it's misleading in its wording except for one thing, and I think that's what we need to discuss. "Are you in favor of using ranked ballot voting?" Those three words are capitalized, and that would be the direction to staff to create ranked ballot voting. The problem is, it doesn't define ranked ballot voting in the question. You're expected to go to a public meeting, or go online, or Google, or, you know, read the city webpage to get the definition. And so my simple question would be, what would it look like if we actually put the definition in the question, so that the people that are voting yes and no actually have the definition in front of them, so they know what they're voting for? If that definition ends up being long, or if it ends up being misleading, I would say it's a bad idea. And I would agree with the speaker that said it's short and to the point and clear. But if we get people voting a certain way because they think ranked ballot voting is something that it's not, then we've actually created a problem that didn't exist before. So that's my suggestion. My suggestion is ranked ballot voting, those three words don't actually tell the voter what it is. So, and because we don't have this in Canada, and because no one's familiar with it, we can't assume that everyone knows what we're talking about. And although the public engagement strategies that the staff have undertaken are obviously been well-intentioned and very helpful, they don't guarantee that 50% of the population is going to understand the question. So what do we do about that? I don't know if I'm suggesting that we should change the wording, but if we're not sure that, we know that the public knows what ranked ballot voting means, we need to take a longer look at it. And we don't have any time to do that because it's March 1st. So we have to decide that tonight. If the rest of you are confident that the question is clear, that everybody knows what ranked ballot voting is, and that we can trust the electorate to do their homework, then great, then we can go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Neal.
Thank you. We have received, I think, definitely one piece of correspondence regarding this. And I've also received some questions from constituents. I just want to clarify a couple of things with staff. First of all, the referendum laws say clearly, and we face this with the whole debate around how to word the casino referendum in our last election. It's my understanding it has to be simple, and it has to be either a yes or no question only, so we can't present it as options, which I think the correspondence that we received suggests. Perhaps staff can comment on that nature of the law.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that question, Councillor Neal. So within the legislation, the question has to be clear, concise, and neutral, and it has to be capable of being answered in the affirmative or negative. And in my opinion, that question does meet that test. And I don't see by adding more information to the question to make it easier for the electorate to be able to understand what they're actually voting on. Keep in mind, this isn't rocket science, and we also have a public engagement strategy and community outreach, where we're trying to continuously ensure that information with respect to what a ranked ballot election is all about.
Thank you. And my last question, and it was a kind of fear of this happening, was in the correspondence we received and also some comments I've received. Clearly, the way this is worded, we're not considering elections at large for council seats at all. As I understand it, this clearly, if anything, would reinforce the concept of district councillors. Is my interpretation accurate?
Mr. Clerk.
Through, Mr. Mayor, you are correct. The wording says mayor and district councillor. I have no direction whatsoever to take a look at a different type of election. The districts are in play. We have no will moving forward to take a look at at-large elections. It's a totally different process with respect to ward boundary review, and the staff have not been provided that direction by council.
Thank you. And I do share some of the previous councillors' comments about, and I know that we're doing our best to do a kind of outreach, public education. Clearly, the ballot has to be straightforward. Is there anything that would preclude us from having an information poster at polling stations that would allow clarification on what constitutes a ranked ballot election?
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, there's nothing that precludes us from doing that, and that's also part of our engagement strategy as well. We want to provide as much information as we can, both onsite as well as through our different meetings and our social media tweets and whatnot. So any and all information that we're able to bring forward to ensure that we try to do our best to talk about what a ranked ballot election is all about is something that we do take seriously, and we will ensure that that information is available.
Mr. Wallace.
Through you, Your Worship. Just in addition to that, the legislation actually requires that there be directions to the electors at each voting place, so that would be provided. Should council decide to go with ranked ballot voting, those instructions would be available at each voting place so that the electors would know how to mark their ballot. In addition, we would also, as we talked about, there would be one additional staff member or polling worker at each voting location, and one of their prime responsibilities would be to make sure that the electors know how to mark their ballot.
Thank you. That's reassuring. Thank you very much.
Councillor Holland.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In addition to what Mr. Wallace said, we're also taking a look at having videos that would be available while the people are waiting in line to be able to go to vote. That would, once again, provide additional information with respect to the ranked balloting as well. So as I indicated previously, we're looking at any and all opportunities to ensure that the message is clear, concise, and is out there.
Thank you. Councillor Holland.
Thank you, Your Worship. So another question, I guess similar to Councillor Neal's, regarding the type of material that would be available in advance. Just, I wasn't entirely clear in the presentation when looking at the budget. If the public education campaign material included the sort of pre-election mail-out type materials that were received the last time, for example, with explanations on telephone or internet voting, that type of thing, like an actual drop in an individual's mailbox, is that something that would be considered?
Mr. Clerk.
Through, Mr. Mayor, definitely, that's something we're looking at.
Great, excellent. So I guess then, just to the question itself, I believe the question is clear. I believe it can be answered in the affirmative or the negative, and I'm happy to see it come before us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bohm.
Thank you, Your Worship. And through you, just as a comment to some of the other questions, I think this is something where we can also help get the word out as well about this and essentially help educate the public. As a student of political science, there's pros and cons to every single way of electing people. I think the wording here is ideal because it's simple. It is up to, you know, the residents and the citizens of the city to ask the questions and to make sure they understand what they're voting on. Going the referendum way is definitely the most democratic way. It's ironic, but we're actually using almost first past the post in a sense to do a referendum, so it's kind of neat when you look at that. But based on what I heard in the earlier presentation, it wouldn't have changed 2/3 of the results. Is that correct? Based on, just in the last election, had we have had ranked ballot?
Mr. Clerk.
Through, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. And then also as a follow-up, so it wouldn't have changed the majority of the results, but at the same time, it would have added almost a quarter million dollars in costs. Is that correct?
Through, Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. So I think that's just something to consider. Is it going to really change the results that much, and what's the cost? And there are pros and cons to both sides. As far as the ranked balloting versus first past the post or proportional representation, there are many, many pros and cons. So to the constituents' point on that, or the residents' point on that, it does behoove everybody to make sure they understand what the different systems are and what the pros and cons are. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Councillor Hutchison.
My question, the first point I just wanted to see staff respond to is, originally, Councillor Neal talked about a poster talking about ranked ballot voting, but if anything like that was to happen, you'd also have to include the pros and cons of both the present system and the proposed system. Otherwise, you could be accused of being biased and giving more information on one system than the other. So, and you notice, we heard from a citizen about how they would like to know more, and I know we're going to do that before the election, but if we're actually talking about putting something in the polls on election day, then I think you have to do both. And, you know, what are the pros and cons of both, and let them decide. Otherwise, it's, you're, I'm asking you to respond to this. It seems to me you're going to be accused of bias, so, and I know you don't want to do that, so.
Mr. Clerk.
Through, Mr. Mayor, our information with respect to the ranked balloting is not necessarily to take a look at pros and cons, it's to provide as much factual information with respect to how the process works. The pros and cons aren't something that the municipality is really engaged in. We're following council direction with respect to the question on the ballot, but it isn't something where we would be, as I say, looking at putting a list of pros and cons, five pros, three cons, and whatnot. Our information and our outreach and our engagement is with respect to what ranked ballot voting is about, not necessarily the pros and cons. That's not our duty.
Okay. I guess what I'm saying is it should be. Okay? And I think we'll open ourselves up to charges of bias. And it's got nothing to do with my position on this whatsoever. I can just see that's what's going to happen. And I don't see a problem with that. Or you ask people to do it for you. There are experts in town that can tell you very succinctly what the pros and cons are. So, anyway, if we vote for this, it's just on the question. In the report, it talks about how the ranking of three candidates only would be the default position if we were to go with ranked ballot voting. In your costs, do you assume that? Or, because the example you gave had like five, right? But in a system where you're ranking the three candidates only, and you had five candidates, two of them would be lopped off immediately. Would that not be the way it would work?
Mr. Clerk.
Through, Mr. Mayor, it's difficult for us to provide that type of a response because the reality is, we don't know whether it's going to be three, four, five, or six.
But the legislative...
So, Councillor Hutchison, I'm going to let you continue. It's a little bit of room, but I just want to remind council that right now we're talking about the wording of the question.
I know.
I'm not getting into... We're not getting into the intricacies of the system yet. There will be time for that. That's coming. But that's just not tonight. So I understand that there's a little bit of leeway here because we want to understand the context for the question. So I'm not cutting you off, but I'm just going to ask if you can just trim it down and focus on that.
Well, I just thought it was important. I agree with you. I was just trying, I think it's a very important contextual question because the example was five, the default is three, and yes, I know you don't know because we could set it at seven, you know, which would be pretty costly, but, you know, that's up to us. Or whoever makes the decision, the new council, right? So that might influence people's approach to it. That's all I'm getting at. Now, the cost of doing this, are we allowed to ask questions about the cost?
So, the concern, Councillor Hutchinson, is that we've already made a decision, we're going to hold a referendum, and now we're dealing with the wording of the question. The discussions on the cost is absolutely one of the elements of the pros and cons that I would imagine would be key to bring out in the actual debate leading up to that. So I believe that we'll have that opportunity, but that becomes in a debate on ranked balloting itself tonight, and that's not a direction that we want to go.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Now, that being said, so, I mean, if it's a question, just to clarify, if you can relate it to why it matters for the question, then sure.
Well, I can imagine that someone would not want to vote in favor of this simply on the basis of the cost of doing the referendum.
That could very well be, but that's not directed to the wording of the question. Like if your point was that we needed to put something in the wording of the question, then that would, that would make it relevant, whether you think that that's a good idea or not.
Okay. I'm just going by the report. The report goes on in all kinds of detail, right? So that seemed like fair game.
Like I said, I'm trying to give you, everybody, a little bit of leeway around the context, but just try to, not too far away from the question.
On the wording, I'm fine. Okay, the wording is good. You know, the context will make all the difference.
Councillor Sanek.
Thank you, Your Worship. My question is about the wording, and it's about the piece of correspondence that we all received today. And so what she says in the correspondence is that she would want to support having ranked ballot for the mayor, but not necessarily for the district councillor. So my question is, can we split the question into two parts to have yes, no for the mayor and yes, no for the district councillor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, a simple answer is no. The legislation talks to members of council. Mayor and district councillor are members of council. Therefore, it's not appropriate, not legal to separate it and have it in two separate ways.
Okay. Thank you. I won't be supporting the bylaw, just so you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor George.
Thank you, Your Worship. I do like the question, so I'm going to try and keep my comments around the question. The fact that we chose some months or some time ago to proceed with a question as a referendum, knowing there was going to be a cost associated with that, I'm still supportive of that. I think that the fact that we're just speaking to ranked ballots in the question is good because people already vote a certain way, so we don't have to, in the question or in some fashion, explain to them how they already currently vote because they already know they're already doing it. And that the education program you're going to have to get out there to explain this question, I support that as well. I think it's people who are out there and are taking the time to get out and vote and make, you know, a difference in the city, they need to be educated on what they're voting on. And we can only do so much, but at least, as it was stated earlier, by putting a question forward, we're giving the people an opportunity to make that choice. So, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair? Yes, Your Worship, I recognize you. Thank you. So just a couple of comments on the question itself. I would agree, it's simple, it's straightforward. I understand the point that was raised earlier about ranked ballot voting and is there a way to add in the definition so people understand what it is that they're asking for? I think it's incredibly difficult to do that and keep the question neutral. And I say that because that was exactly the sort of stuff that we dealt with on the casino question four years ago, that the more information you add, the more difficult it becomes to keep it neutral. And I think that that relates to the earlier comments about who's responsible for providing the pros and cons. I think it would be a terrible idea for the city to do that. That's up to proponents or opponents of ranked ballot voting to make those case and to try to convince the community one way or the other. That's exactly what happened with the casino. There were groups that were pro-casino and groups that were anti-casino, and they worked very hard during the election campaign to get their message out. And I think that that ultimately is the best way to do it. We stay neutral. We want to obviously hear from everybody without any presence of bias. So I think that it's very clear. I think people are going to have to do their homework ahead of time. So you're going to have to know what ranked ballot voting is, but you know what? Voters do their homework all the time. Because when they come into a ballot and they see a bunch of names for mayor or a bunch of names for councillor, they've already done their homework. They know what those names mean. They know what the platforms and the political stands are that are attached to those names. So I think people are going to do their homework, they're going to know what ranked ballot voting is. So I think that, I think that we have a plan and a way forward, and I look forward to seeing how the debate unfolds in the months to come. Thank you.
Thank you, and I return the chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, so we will call the vote on item one. And that carries by a vote of 11 to 1. Okay, with that, Madam Deputy Clerk, I'll ask for bylaws, please.
Moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor O'Sanek, that bylaws one and two be given their first and second reading.
And that carries by a vote of 11 to 1.
Moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor O'Sanek, that clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw one three readings.
And that carries 11 to 1.
Moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor Neal, that bylaws one and two be given their third reading.
And that carries 11 to 1. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Bohm, seconded by councillor Neal. And that carries. We're adjourned. We will see you in 28 minutes.